I'll call the meeting to order. Seated tonight as of now is Chuck Sheehan and myself, David Rathbun, Lynn Conway, and Fred Dykman. Minutes?
You never know, we may put Chuck back in the corner.
No, he's...
I'll be here.
Do I have a motion on the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll be in to approve. Staff, enough on staff? Commission?
For the, um...
What?
I was saying for the administrative review...
No, I'm going to go down to commission and just announce.
Okay, I'm jumping ahead.
We will be moving our meetings as the first of... First meeting in February to the school administration building in Field Street in Parkaduck. There's a lot better meeting room, that's the old Parkaduck Middle School. So, we'll have two more meetings after this here and then we'll be over to Parkaduck. Keith?
Thank you, Lynn. We believe the sound system will sound better than this. Item 5D administrative review, item 5D-1 is 19, 271 ZON Eckersley LLC Precious Memories zoning permit application for interior basement modifications. Property located at 168 Greemanville Ave., Mystic Assessor's Map 172, Block 2, Lot 4, Zone RA 40. This application's for the Precious Memories daycare, which was approved by special use permit in 2011. That approval included storage in the basement level. The applicants are just looking to modify the application to have a new staff lounge in part of the basement. And a new enclosure will be added around these egress bilco stairs in the rear. They've also applied for a special use permit at this meeting, which we'll have a public hearing for at a future meeting to increase the number of students and add a parking space there, but that's something we'll deal with in a few months. The current application for the staff lounge, it meets the requirements of the zoning regulations. There's nothing really else to say about it.
Does it need a paramartial?
It does. We sent the plans to them.
Okay. Do I have any discussion on this application?
Does it change the parking requirements at all?
This doesn't.
It doesn't?
It's really just like a staff break room.
Okay.
They upgraded the exit from the basement, or target, as it costs from the report?
Yeah, the, um... There was an existing set of stairs that leads up from there, and they're adding a new enclosure around it, which I assume is a fire code requirement.
Do I hear a motion?
Move we approve the administrative review item 19-271 IZON Eckersley LLC Precious Memories?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gardner Young has now joined the group. Welcome, Gardner.
Moving on to old business, item 6. Item 6 says, "PZ 1927 SD Claudia Adams and Patrick Marshall, subdivision application for a three-lot subdivision of a 4.58 acre parcel. Property located at 285 and 289 North Stonington Road, Stonington. Assessor's map 145, Block 1, Lots 7 and 7B, Zone RA 80." And the applicants are here to present this application.
We have, I have one. I think we all got it.
But I'll take one. Thank you. I'll take one. Thank you for that.
I heard this at Conservation Commission, so I know what's going on. It's existing, and it got screwed up along the way, so they should explain it to you. Yes, please. You can take it off the stand.
Good evening. My name is Susan Mattern. I'm owner of Mattern &amp; Stefan Land Surveyors located at 148 Route 2 in Preston, Connecticut. I'm representing Claudia Adams, who's the owner and applicant of property located at 285 North Stonington Road. She's the applicant and subdivider. And the additional parcel that you see on the plan is owned by Patrick Terry Marshall. He owns 289 North Stonington Road, and we're here for a subdivision of land. I have some items that I'd like to enter into the record to begin with. Who should I pass them to? Okay, so I have the subdivision application, the notice of abutting property owners, the notice of intent to subdivide, the certified mailing receipts, the inland, wetland, and water courses commission approval, which was on December 5th, 2019. We have Ledge Light Health District approvals. One is for 285 North Stonington Road, and one is for 289 North Stonington Road. We have the town planner comments. And then in response to the town planner comments, we have a water supply report. Do you want me to read these into the record?
I don't think we need to.
Okay. And that's for both properties. And we also have, we're asking for a waiver for the stormwater management report. Okay, so I'd like to give you a brief history of this project. We have two existing properties. We have 285 North Stonington Road, which currently would encompass from this line down to here, and then 289 North Stonington Road. 285 is conforming the way that we show it right now. 289 is being brought into conformance with the RA 80 zone by this application. Both 285 and 289 have existing houses on them. The house on 285, which is the Adams' house, was built in 1946. They actually don't live there, but Claudia Adams is the owner. The house on 289, which is the Marshall lot, was built in 1920. So, you might ask, well, why are we subdividing this property when there are already two existing houses on the property? The answer is that the two parcels, Adams and Marshall, along with land of Linda Hardy, which is located to the rear, now formerly Linda Hardy, and I'm going to show you on the assessor's map, if you want to pass that around. Those three parcels comprised 13.8 acres prior to subdivision in the town of Stonington. Subdivision came into effect in July of 1960, and now we begin to count. The free split was the Hardy piece, and that was in 1987. That's 215 New London Turnpike. You're entitled to one free split after the inception of subdivision regulations in a town. After that, you must seek and be granted subdivision approval. The next parcel out was the Marshall parcel in 1994. For whatever reason, when the Marshall parcel was conveyed, due to the error of either the closing attorney or the title searcher or whatever, it should have been a subdivision, and it was not a subdivision at that time. They didn't go through the process, and that's what we're seeking to do this evening. We want to legalize the subdivision in accordance with the statutory definition of subdivision and make it conform to the RA 80 zoning requirements. So, two things that we had to do for Patrick Marshall's lot was we had to give him more frontage. So, we're going to take this triangle away from the Claudia Adams lot and add it to the Marshall lot to make 200 feet of frontage. We also had to satisfy the area requirement, so we had to add this strip of land behind the Adams lot back in here to satisfy the area requirement, which is, had to be at least over 80,000 square feet, but also had to take into account the wetland proration due to this pond, which is located in the southwest corner of the property. We also had to determine the probable locations of the existing septic systems. So, here's a septic system for this lot, septic system for this lot, and then we performed soil testing out in the field, deep test holes and percolation tests to... We had to comply with the B 100A requirements to depict a reserve area, because when we're doing a boundary line configuration, we have to show that there's enough room left on the lot by taking away from one lot and adding to another that reserve area in case the septic, the primary system fails, that there's still enough property to be able to support a sanitary system. We had the wetlands delineated by Rich Snarsky. Down in this corner, there's a pond, and then a wetland boundary around it, and then we showed 100-foot upland review area, which is depicted by this red line. We're not proposing any activity within that area, and we did get our wetlands approval. Another regulation that we have to satisfy is the dedication of open space in accordance with Section 8.1 of the subdivision regulations. We've depicted an area of approximately 0.69 acre, the requirement's 15 percent. We presented the open space parcel to the Conservation Commission on November 25th, 2019, and they unanimously approved it. My clients are offering this parcel to meet the open space requirement as a wildlife habitat. The parcel's wooded and encompasses a portion, encompasses a portion of the existing pond that you can see. And the parcel would remain in its natural state. At the request of the town planner, we've submitted the water supply report and the request for the waiver for a stormwater management report. Since no activity is proposed in association with this application, we are requesting a waiver of the stormwater management report requirement. We believe we're in compliance with the requirements of the town of Stonington for subdivision approval, and hope you will look favorably upon our application.
Thank you.
You have any questions?
Any questions?
Just a clarification. The property in back of that was originally, the three parcels were originally one parcel, is that...
Yes.
And then it was done in '60, but it wasn't done as an actual subdivision?
Correct. When the Hardy piece came out, that would be the free split that you were entitled to.
Okay.
Okay? And then when the Marshall piece came out, that would have created the third parcel.
Or a subdivision.
Right.
Which wasn't done.
Correct. So, it's really just legitimizing the whole...
I just wanted to make it clear in my mind, I'm not questioning it, I'm just wanting to...
Sure.
I think you can probably hear me. I have a couple, just a couple of quick questions that pertain to the notes, and I think perhaps the Ledge Light report addresses the first one, but the standoff distance from the well on the most southerly lot, not the open space, but the lot in the middle, is 75 feet. You have the arc drawn, and it goes right up to the fringe of the delineation of the existing primary reserve area. And I was concerned, without seeing Ledge Light, that the whole delineation is based on where the owners told you it was. And I was wondering if perhaps we needed a little bit more research as to where it actually is, because that's a health requirement, that the well be 75 feet away from the septic system, and I was a little bit nervous that it was just the owner's delineation as to where the septic system was, and not some scientific designation like perhaps underground radar or something like that that can give you a much more refined location of where those pipes are underground. I'm satisfied now, and I'm answering my own question, but I want to put it on the record, that Ledge Light has looked at it, and they've not raised a question, and I'm not going to substitute my discretion for theirs. Second question pertains to the note that the property's subject to a drainage right away in favor of condo. And I didn't see any point discharges on the map, and I'm assuming that that's just a unrestricted right to drain anywhere onto the property, and there is no point discharge. If you could just confirm that, that's...
Yes, that is actually correct. We, you know, the first thing, when I saw that in the deed, I was like, well, where's the culvert? And so, you know, we talked about it, you know, all our shots in the field and everything, and there is none. So, if they ever want to put one in, they have the right to do so, but at this point, none exists.
Any other questions?
And just in response to your Ledge Light understanding, we did recover this existing tank cover right here, and then we talked with Katie Baldwin about, you know, performing some additional testing on the existing septic system, but she felt like this was sufficient. And, you know, we also, by where this lot line was created, we had to give, you know, some kind of, that's the word I'm looking for, hope that when they laid that lot line out, they knew where the septic systems were. So...
It's down gradient. There are a lot of other things that, you know, address the concerns. So, you know, as long as Ledge Light has opined that it's not a problem, I'm fine. I let the question entered onto the record, just to show that we actually raised it, but that the Ledge Light report does address it. And I saw your note that you had located the frame covers for the, are they precast septic tanks? Is that what they are?
Um...
Manhole covers? Precast? It must be.
Yeah, I mean, we just located the cover, was, we didn't uncover the whole tank or anything. Yeah.
Okay. My questions are addressed, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have a couple. So, the Linda Hardy lot, which is not part of the subdivision because it was a free split, it's donating or giving land to the 289, the 289 lot, right? So, this strip that's going across, not the frontage, but the strip that's giving it the area...
No, 289's giving that.
Okay.
You're talking about this strip right here?
Yeah.
She actually owns that.
Linda?
Yes.
Linda Hardy owns this strip.
Yeah, just that little sketch that...
Who is donating this section right here? I'm pointing to the back section.
That's coming from this.
It is.
So, right now, this is the Marshall lot. It's a rectangle, and all the rest of it is Claudia Adams.
Okay.
Okay, so Claudia Adams would be giving the triangle, this funny shape parcel that goes behind the lot, has to get added onto Marshall, and that would be the open space piece.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay? And that little assessor's map that I gave you, oh, right here, whoop, sorry. This shows the configuration. See how she's got an odd configured lot?
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion on this application?
Mr. Chairman, we do have just a couple of recommended stipulations here. In the report, there are three of them, although now that Ledge Light has approved this application, number one isn't necessary anymore. So, we're just talking about what in the report are number two and three. Number two is just that the open space must be deeded prior to or concurrently with the recording of the subdivision plans per Section 8.3.5 of the subdivision regulations. Should the town accept the open space, the Board of Selectmen approval will be required. The other one was AutoCAD or approved equivalent drawing of the approved subdivision shall be submitted to the town prior to recording. A fee in lieu of this requirement may be provided per Section 3.942 of the subdivision regulations.
Do I hear a motion on this, including the stipulations?
I move to approve PZ 1927 SD Claudia L. Adams and Patrick T. Marshall with the stipulations that have been noted by Keith.
Do I hear a second? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have it.
Well, I assume it was bundled into this approval, but...
This doesn't, this, clarify, this does include the waiver. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job explaining it. Thank you for that.
Cyan.
Right here?
That's me.
Are you there?
I'm there. You're available.
Who wants to read the pink sheet?
Notice of public hearing pursuant to the general statutes of the State of Connecticut, revision of 1958, and all amendments thereto pursuant to the zoning regulations for the town of Stonington, Connecticut. The Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonington Middle School, formerly known as Mystic Middle School, 204 Ms. Tuxit Ave., Mystic, Connecticut, on Tuesday, December 17th, 2019, at 7:00 PM on the following applications. PZ 1929 SUP and CAM DW Casper and ERH Group LLC Coastal Wealth Management. Special use permit and coastal area management review applications to permit the demolition of two existing buildings and construction of a 9900 square foot, two-story mixed-use building with associated site improvements. Property located at 1 Allen Street and 5456 Williams Ave., Mystic. Assessor's map 161, Block 18, Lots 9 and 10, Zone LS 5. At such hearing, any party may appear in person or be represented by an agent or by an attorney. Any disabled person requiring auxiliary aids or services for effective communication or access to this hearing should contact the Planning and Zoning Department at 860-353-5095 10 days prior to the hearing date.
Seated at this public hearing is Chuck Sheehan, myself, David Rathbun, Lynn Conway, Fred Dykman, and Gardner Young. The way the public hearings work, first we'll hear from the applicant, and all those in favor. Then we'll hear from anyone opposed, and then we'll hear from anyone for general comments, and then we'll hear from the town planner. There is a sign-up sheet over there. If you'd like to speak, please sign it. The applicant.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Bartlett. I'm with CLA Engineers. We're located at 317 Main Street in Norwich, Connecticut, and I'm representing the applicant. This is the existing condition survey, that's sheet one of your plans. The site consists of two parcels of land. First address is 1 Allen Street, which is located at the intersection of Allen Street and Williams Avenue, which is Route 1. The second parcel is 54-56 Williams Avenue. As part of this application, we're going to combine the two parcels into one parcel, and together they make up 0.7 acres. Small piece of property. There's a building on each of the sites. On 5456 is a building that contains two dwelling units, each of them two-bedroom, and then a garage in the rear. On 1 Allen Street is a single-family residence that, in recent times, has been used as an office space also. As part of this project, we're going to tear down all the existing buildings and start from scratch. What's proposed is a mixed-use building. The footprint of the building is just under 5,000 square feet. The finished floor will be at elevation 12. The entire site is in the flood plain. The elevations range from 5 to 10. So, we're putting, locating the building at the highest corner of the site so that we can get the finished floor a foot above the 100-year flood elevation, which is 11. The first floor of the building is going to be office space. It's going to be for Coastal Wealth Management. They're going to move their facility there. Presently, they're at 41 East Main Street in Mystic, and they want to, they need more space, but they want to stay in town. So, they've purchased these two properties and hope to build this building for their facility. The second floor is going to be three small apartments, two one-bedroom and one two-bedroom As far as the access goes, we're going to do a one-way access through the site. The entrance will be off of Route 1, and the exit will be off of Allen Street, right across... across from the access drive for the Tabor Inn, not sure I pronounced that right. So, it'll be one-way. Presently, there's three driveways coming off of Route 1. We're going to eliminate all three and just have the one proposed access drive in. And on Allen Street, there's two existing drives, and we're going to limit that and just have the one exit drive. So, we're eliminating three access drives and going to have a one-way in and a one-way out. Going through the zoning regulations, there was a requirement for 26 parking spaces for the office space and for the residential. We've provided 26 spaces on-site. We've gotten comments from DOT, which we've addressed, and they're all part of the original plans that were submitted December 2nd, which was the deadline for submitting for this public hearing. We have addressed all their comments, we've addressed the majority of the comments from planning staff. There's one comment we're going to need to discuss, the sidewalks, whether we have sidewalks on Route 1 or not. But we've addressed all their other comments in your plans that you received already, because we submitted them before December 2nd. The town engineer had comments, but we didn't receive them till after the December 2nd date. So, we've revised the plans, we've met all his comments, we've gotten a second review letter that just has a few conditional comments, things that he wants to see go on after construction. But the revised plans were not part of his, the revised plans addressing all his comments were not part of the submittal we did December 7th. I brought revised plans tonight that he has reviewed and approved, just so you can start taking a look at them.
Are they, are these plans that we all have in front of us?
Yes, those are the ones.
Excuse me, we will have to continue this hearing until January because of the date line of getting the plans in, not the notice before the meeting. So, we don't have enough time.
That's why I specifically told you that wasn't part.
Yeah, I answered them all, but they weren't part of the submittal on December 2nd, so
that's part of the issue. The drainage system is a little bit different than what was originally submitted. I'd like to just show you what the final plan is. We have two rain gardens on the site, which are shown in green on this plan. This small rain garden in the middle, the entire parking lot drains to that rain garden in the center, goes to an oil separator, and then to an infiltration system. The roof drainage from the proposed building also goes to the infiltration system. The drainage system, which is a combination of rain gardens and the infiltration system, has been designed to actually reduce the flows leaving the site. Existing flows from the site, which also includes half of Allen Street because they flow, flows onto our site, is less than 2 CFS in a 50-year storm. We're reducing it to less than a half CFS in a 50-year storm. So, we've done everything we can to reduce it, and the one comment that we have not addressed is the possibility of sidewalks on Route 1. The applicant does, has asked for a waiver. It's not really a waiver, because I don't know that it's a requirement, but we've asked that sidewalks not be required. There's a number of power poles and some, it would be a difficult area to put the sidewalk, a sidewalk in, and it could get expensive, so we've asked for it not to be required.
There's no sidewalks there now.
There are no sidewalks on the south side.
Sidewalks on the other side of the street.
North side of Route 1, there's sidewalks, the whole stretch. There's no sidewalks on the south side anywhere near our site, there's no sidewalks on Allen Street or the loop back up to Hatch Street. So, there's no connection. There is a crosswalk right here at the corner that kind of goes to nowhere, and DOT is in the process of putting in new handicap ramps all along the sidewalk, or they're designing it anyways, they're not actually putting them in yet. So, they asked us to put in a concrete landing, so if a wheelchair gets on their ramp, comes across this road, there's a safe place for them to get out of the road and they're not stuck in traffic. So, they asked us to do that, and that is shown on the revised plans that were submitted December 2nd.
Any questions?
Do I recall from some of the material we received in advance of the meeting that there was concern about the runoff to the neighboring properties and whether your
Yes.
rain garden would accommodate all of the water?
Well, the original plan had the infiltration system in the rain garden, and there was concern that it was too close to adjacent buildings, and it might cause, it might aggravate any water going into their basements. So, I worked with the town engineer, we went with DEP. DEP has a recommendation that any infiltration system be 100 feet from any down gradient building. So, we moved the infiltration system from the rain garden over to the center of the building. So, we're 100 feet from all the down gradient buildings, and the town engineer was happy with that.
One of the, one of the other comments that the town engineer had was that there were no permeability tests.
We had done-
And the success of these systems is clearly
Yes.
dependent on how the soil performs.
We had done permeability testing for where the old infiltration system was, they just weren't part of the original submittal. We, after we decided to move, we went out and did two more test holes and did another permeability test there. They've all been submitted to the town engineer. There's good soils out there, it's well-drained gravel, and the permeability rates were on the high end of the range that DEP recommends.
Those tests should be put on, on the sheet four, where the rest of the test data is, so it's easily accessible.
We can absolutely do that, it's in the drainage report.
Thank you. So, the town engineer has an answer to all of his myriad of questions now?
Yes, and there is a final memo from him. It had four comments, but they were more- Yeah, they were more, one of them was, well, you can read them, they're conditions of approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I have a couple of questions, and I'm really sorry because I know the numbers are on the plan, but I can't read anything that, that's small.
Well, they're small, those reduced plans.
So, I see, I mean, you stated that it's a two-story building, and then we have this facade kind of going along the front.
Yes.
And then we have this rectangle kind of addition that's a little bit higher. So, can you just tell me the total height of the building, including the rectangle? Because I, I just can't read it. Is it 31 feet?
38, it's 38.
It's 38.
We, and we, I forgot to mention, we have been to the Architectural Design Review Board twice. In November, they made some recommendations, we went back to the December meeting with revised plans, and they were fine with it, and they approved it. But the architect is here, if you'd like to see the building plans in more detail.
So, yeah, so, I mean, it's 30, 38 feet versus, what is the purpose of that, that rectangle, that tall rectangle?
It's a stairwell to, to provide access to the roof.
This, this-
There's a roof deck.
I-
There's a roof deck, so the stairway goes up to the roof deck, and it has to be a certain height so people can walk out.
Uh-huh. It seems like a pretty big structure for a stairwell.
Well, it's-
Yeah.
Got to get up to a full story up here.
I know, right, so it's a two-story building, but then it's got a-
Three-story stairwell.
Yeah, yeah, so it's-
My name's David Noe, I'm with 360 Design Plus, and I'm the architect, as Ellen has stated. Yeah, so that, that stairwell is 10 feet wide and 22 feet long. It's a switchback stair to get us up to, from the second floor apartments up to the roof deck. And again, that's, that goes to a total of 38 feet, which is two feet below the maximum height of a building in that zone.
But in reality, it turns, what you're saying is a two-story building into three stories? Because you've got, you've got that extra-
Yeah, I mean, technically, it's, it's not a story, just because it's a stairwell, but yes.
I mean visually, a very flat-roofed building.
This doesn't, I mean, what you're seeing here is from the back.
I, yeah, right.
Yeah, so the top of the parapet's approximately at 32 feet. And then we're up, we're at 38 to the top of the stairwell.
You don't see it from the street here.
You do see it from the street.
No, you don't, you do see that little bump. But nothing worse was across the street, Antonio's building, he goes right up, he goes up about 40 feet.
I know, but he's not here with an application.
I'm just saying, it fits in with the neighborhood.
It's below the, it's below the required maximum height, correct?
Correct, correct, the maximum height's 40 feet.
And, and just like a chimney doesn't really affect the overall height of a house, you know, this is, is not the primary architectural shape of, of the building, it's, it's an appendage, and it, it's, it's really no different than a large, than a large chimney, which on some houses is fairly large, like mine.
Correct, yeah, and like Ellen has stated, we did go before the Architecture Review Board, and we went back twice, and so we reviewed all this aesthetically with them and got their comments and feedback. We made revisions to the facade.
What revisions did you make?
So, we initially had a smaller front entry piece, and we chose to, to extend the front roof the entire length of the building. We simplified the trim along the windows and around, along the corner boards. We initially had a sort of sloping roof, like a cut-off mansard that went along the parapet, and we, we reduced that to just a simple, plain, paneled facade. They didn't have too many comments based on the stair tower. And then we added some more windows to the back of the building and changed, and we also changed the windows from a black-framed sash to a white, to a white sash, to kind of keep more of that traditional New England vernacular.
What's the material going to be of the porch in the front, the roofing?
That's a metal, a metal roof with, we have Azac trim on all the columns and corner boards and hardy plank siding.
Is it going to be black?
Excuse me?
Is it going to be black?
Yeah, black, dark gray-black, yep.
Probably the black windows would look good.
I thought so.
So much for the Architectural Review Board. So, the, my other question is, has to do with the screening. It's a very, for that area, 26 spaces, it's quite a few spaces. So, I know that the majority are, if you look at it, it's, it's kind of behind the building on Allen Street. But, but as you're looking down, you're seeing, you know, kind of the, the two, the length of the lot, the two lots put together. So, what is the plan for any kind of screening or vegetation on, on Route 1?
There's a great planning thing here.
There are landscape plans.
My landscape is wonderful, because they use great trees in it.
Okay.
I mean, the trees that I've never-
Okay, but, but can, I'd like them to answer.
Well, it's here, we look at our plan, it shows all the trees, the landscape plan.
Could you answer my question, please?
The landscape plan has every tree down on it.
Yep.
But they're not the landscape architect.
I didn't ask the landscape architect to come here tonight. If you would like him to come to the next meeting, he could probably explain better, but we have a beech tree in the middle, and then there's three, what are they?
It's a GT1. I don't know what that is, a honey locust.
Honey locusts?
Honey locusts.
Honey locusts here, and a large beech tree.
And then one in the, the rain garden, too, that'll help block off the back part.
All around the south side.
Yes, and then-
I can talk to it.
Surrounding the entire parking lot is landscaping.
We also reviewed the fencing. We needed to propose the white fence, and with the review board, we decided to do a green, a green fence to sort of let it blend with the, the trees, and we also minimized it so it goes along the back and then just up a little bit on the side.
I see that.
Look at this, man. This is all the landscape, but you don't have the right page.
David.
Look, there's the landscape, and there's the key to it, it tells you what they have, what trees.
And that beech tree, this, this large beech tree as well, I mean, I know he went back, the landscape architect went back to review that tree, it was a question by the review board as well, the architecture review board, and he did deem that that was the best species tree with the size and the canopy to help screen the area. And to your point with the stair tower, it actually, it's right in front of the stair tower.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to comment on this landscape plan. It's one of the better ones I've seen in a long time, for a variety of trees and what is native to the area. We don't have a lot of junk trees put in, in 20 years you're going to have to take down. These are going to be substantial trees, and it's going to look very nice.
Mr. Chairman, I have one last question.
Okay.
I apologize for not asking it before. This is just to avoid you having to come back here if, if this is an admission. I don't see a dumpster pad anywhere. As an all-public works guy, I always think about where the dumpster pad is supposed to be located.
No, we discussed that, and in the office building that they have now, they keep, they have bags that they're given by the town for pickup, they keep them in the kitchen, and on garbage day, I think it's twice a week, they just put the bags out. They really don't have, they don't generate the kind of trash that you normally would need a dumpster for. They have some paper.
So, even with the residences, the three residences
Right.
and 5,000 square feet of office space, you don't think you need a dumpster?
No, the, the building they're in now has apartments upstairs, too, and they do the same thing, they keep their bags and put them out.
That's fine, as long as it wasn't an oversight.
We did discuss it at Land.
Thank you.
How, how many occupants are in the building, the, our apartments above the building now?
The existing building they're in now?
Just three occupants now, so you might have six upstairs.
Three apartments, six, maybe six people, when it's-
So, did I hear you right, two are one-bedroom and one is two-bedroom, correct?
That is correct.
I would just note, I was looking at the floor plans, the two-bedroom apartment has two laundries in it, are you aware of that?
Yes.
Can you-
So, the intention, sorry.
Go ahead, answer is-
So, the intention is to have a market-rate apartment, these are upscale apartments, and we've provided some amenities to them.
Can, can you explain what the problem is with putting a sidewalk on Route 1? Because it would seem to me a perfect opportunity to, to do that.
There are power poles that are in the way, they, there's a pole that has a pole behind it, a leaning pole, so there'd be difficult to fit the sidewalk through in that location. The use that they have does not generate pedestrian traffic, people don't walk to their financial planner's office typically. It, it's just, there's a lot out there along this road, and it would be, it'd be tricky to get it in.
I, I'm very familiar with it, I go down Allen Street two or three times a week. Perfect opportunity to fix some of that stuff that's hanging out on Route 1, it would seem to me. And, and to put a sidewalk in, which would help with our, our plan to eventually have sidewalks both sides.
On both sides of the street?
I could also, just in terms, I'm the eventual owner. Jason's making it.
Use the microphone.
Okay.
So, just wanted to make a quick comment on the sidewalks. I, I've literally walked both sides of that road, traffic patterns-wise. One, you'd have to remove or move probably a dozen electrical poles, you'd have to move the cemetery, and you'd have to put a sidewalk over the bridge. There are really no connective sidewalks from essentially the train station all the way up to Tabor Inn, and I know that's not a reason to not have them, but I, I would severely doubt, one, that you're- that you're ever going to get a connective sidewalk on that side, and you've got that connective sidewalk on the other side all the way with crosswalks. Again, I don't necessarily know if that's a reason not to do it, but I, I doubt the town will ever get it done, and it just seems like a significant expense that we just won't have that pedestrian traffic on that side. And finally, on that corner, right on the road, is not just an electric pole, but it's, I don't know how to describe it, but it's an entire assembly. It's a V-pole with a huge box. Mike, you might be able to know the terminology better.
A U-verse.
A U-verse box, so, yeah, yeah.
Coming out of Allen Street, actually.
Right, exactly. So, you know the, the box, and then the cemetery is, but literally, if you look at, like a, if you walk down there, the cemetery wall basically is up against the road. So, I don't, I mean, I don't know, but I doubt they'll move the cemetery. I don't see the town ever building sidewalks on the bridge side when there's already one on the other side. So, it just, it would be disconnected. I don't think it'll ever be connected, and it just seems like a, an expense that would be significant on our part, especially without being a pedestrian-driven business.
So, could you state your name on the-
Sure, it's Jason Striniglia, and I own Coastal Wealth Management. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Thank you. Speak in favor of this application? Anyone oppose this application? Any general comments on this application?
Jim Stanton, 46 Masons Island Road. I didn't intend to speak tonight, I just came to see the process. I did happen to look at the application today on the, online, and I was, I, I didn't get a chance to see the renderings here, but the rendering online was not as pretty as I was hoping for, for a building that's going to be on Route 1, that we're going to look at for the next 150 years. So, my ideas are, when I build a house that's close to the water, it gets wood siding, deserves wood siding, it gets wood siding. I like to put some stone around it, so when I'm done, the grass grows, it looks like it was there forever. Because I've had a few people on, at my lot say, oh, don't build a house there, even though it was covered with brush and weeds and junk and so forth. But when I got done, everybody liked it. And, and built three other houses in the, in the area, and two, one of, both of them, the two biggest ones got wood siding, white cedar siding. One of them got cedar impressions because it was a lot less expensive house, but it still got extensive stonework, so nobody really knew whether it was plastic or wood. I was hoping maybe they would put wood in the front or, or, you know, make it look a little bit more seaportish. And I'm almost tempted to volunteer for the, for the board that reviews these plans because I keep thinking that they're going to hold people to a little bit higher standard for, like the Lattisori Building on Route 1, because we don't want any more bicycle buildings sneaking in on Route 1, because I got to look at them every day, you know, and I have to turn my head when I go like this. Now, the trees are growing, it's not so bad at the bicycle building, but I know they reviewed the building on the ice cream place next to the sea view, and I think there was a controversy over that, and they wanted to build it as, you know, cheap because they didn't, they were mad because they had to spend so much money. But if they spent another couple of thousand for the white cedar, cedar shingles or the red cedar shingles, we would have like a, a nice little wood box instead of a plasticky looking box. So, you guys are like the last stop, and I hate to bring this up because I'm still hurting from 1987 when I had to buy sidewalks to nowhere, and I still see them because I still own property in Enfield, Connecticut, and I couldn't get out of it. But I had to do sidewalks in front of five houses, and there's no sidewalks for miles. And I thought that was the biggest waste of my money because I couldn't charge any more for the house for it, and the people that bought the houses didn't want to pay me more for it, so it was just a, a big expense. But since I live in the area and I used to walk that way with the kids when they were small, I kind of know that intersection in that neighborhood very well. So, if you go across the street to get to the sidewalk on the other side, you take your life in your hands because Route 1 is stopped, but everybody going from Hewitt and Masons Island aren't stopped, and they don't really want to slow down for you either. So, you're, you're risking your life over there. And I was hoping that DOT was there the other day working in the, in the bad weather and was going to take out that ledge right in front of, from, in front of the motel there, so people could just squeeze by it safely and just use the grass, because we've used that grass quite a bit. But if they could get the sidewalks in over there, and maybe the electric company would help them out and maybe move a couple of things around without killing them on the price, or maybe they do it for free because maybe they're thinking about doing it already, or maybe the town could encourage them to do it, you know, so everybody could get a section of sidewalks, and then you're only talking one house and the paint store that doesn't have sidewalks. Because then there's parking or paved area to walk in front of the package store, and then there's sidewalks in front of the Dunkin' Donuts area. I possibly know sidewalks in front of SeaSwirl, but it at least gets people down that way. I, I think that they would be surprised that they would use the sidewalks going back and forth to Dunkin' Donuts, because it's kind of a convenient spot to use Dunkin' Donuts there. And the package store, too, maybe. But I, I know what it's like to have to put sidewalks in and, you know, really thinking that I'm not going to get my monies back at this point at all. But I, I'm happy to see the project go forward. I, I'm happy to see that we're getting rid of an eyesore on Route 1, and I hope that they have a very successful business there. I think it's a good spot. I think they'll be very happy there. Thank you.
Please feel free to join the Architectural Board.
I, I think there's a vacancy on that. I was looking at the town's website today to see if tonight's meeting was on, and there is definitely a seat, so there's an opportunity for you. The application instructions are on the website.
I'm the zoning board of Houston, but I might make it, I might make an exception to that.
Got some good ideas.
We have no other speakers at this time, and do I hear a motion to continue the hearing to our January meeting?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Secretary, here a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I just want to clarify for everyone due to past meetings that, will that mean that the public is able to speak again?
Yes.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have it.
Sure, and that's December 7th.
January 7th.
Excuse me, January 7th.
2020.
2020, at this location, at 7:00 PM.